Why is it ever quiet?
Present.
All ready?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the special meeting study session for July 11th, 2006. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that council members Rozansky and Ridgway are absent, and Ridgway is excused.
Yes, Mr. Rozansky will be here shortly. The first item is clarifications of items on the consent calendar. Mr. Curry, do you have any?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Selig.
I have none.
Councilmember Daigle.
None, Mayor Webb.
Councilmember Nichols.
Through item number 10.
Plus sign in special item 16.
I would like to explain that the session, what item four is, and maybe discuss whether we should have a statute that have it to all the service plans that just one. I understand we've adopted them, but I do not feel necessarily that we want to say that we're just supporting them.
Okay, so you're going to ask that that be removed for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
The soils engineering contract five, I didn't understand what the status of that is.
How about a clarification? Can the public courts director comment why this contract is being amended?
Certainly can.
Which item is that?
It's item five, Newport Coast Community Center Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement for Pacific Soils Engineering.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's my understanding that when we originally awarded the project, we neglected to hire services for some geotechnical that were inadvertently omitted, and this is, we're just bringing this back to you to get approval for those additional services.
And this is a firm that we have used since 2002 as a, on an as-needed basis to do various different projects, the needed soils testing for construction processes.
That's correct, and they were also involved in the original geotechnical testing from, during the design process as well.
Okay, thank you. Does that clarify your?
I have one, item eight, the steel grass, planting and survey, that's predominantly survey, is it not? And that's the map and the bay.
Well, I think it is some survey, but it also includes planting also.
That's correct, the city manager's correct in that. There is a bit of planting, most of it's the survey.
But is this for purposes of that, or are we establishing fields that are going to be planted in the future?
Well, we continue to try to establish fields that will be planted in the future away from people's docks, so that they can be used as mitigation locations for dredging beneath people's docks.
I think in general it's a good idea, but I'd like to see a vote, that same explanation in the nights, or to people in the town, although we have a lot, I'm willing to stop there.
Thank you. Any other items?
I had one other one, and that is on the, we're doing an undergrounding on item nine. I think that's still under consent. And the undergrounding is in an area that we talked about somewhat rezoning of that and the general climate. If we did, would the lot stay the same and this be usable, or is this going to be something that should be postponed slightly until we find out whether we're going to stay relatively in that configuration or not?
This is the redevelopment, I mean, the undergrounding district is one that's really between Riverside and Tustin. You have the Mariners Mile Square, but a substantial portion of it is single-family residential houses that are already in existence, that's probably close to two-thirds of it. And as far as the rezoning is concerned, I don't believe that any new uses would substantially change the property lines to impact the undergrounding. So if the district goes ahead and, based on my past experience with undergrounding districts, I just, I can't imagine that that would be significantly impacted.
My question was, weren't we going to, it was talked about a higher density of residential being allowed in approximately that area, is that an area that that would happen, that may end up to be apartments instead of?
The higher density residential is to the east of here.
To the east.
Yeah, so it's not really in this area.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rozansky, did you have any items on the consent calendar that you were concerned with?
None, thank you.
Thank you, then we are now ready for our presentations. It says Bill Ficker's presentation, but I think really what we're here today is to talk about the site north of the library, because I believe that there will be a presentation from more than just Bill Ficker related to that. I think the people that, there are some individuals that wish to talk a little bit about the proposed park site too. But we will start off with Mr. Ficker's presentation on a potential city hall site at Northernly of the library, Central Library.
Thank you, Mayor Webb. Appreciate being here today, and I'm a little nervous because I don't make these presentations anymore, and I don't have a dog and pony show, but I can project the presentation up on the screen, and I hope that's helpful. I'd like to go through this. It is a culmination of about eight months of work from when I started and got really into the project, but I can't cover that quickly, but I'll try to summarize everything as quickly as I can, and then answer any questions. You have my resume, you know, my background in planning, and my avocation of management and organization, which was a large part of my work. I will, in my office at, on 30th Street, 417 30th Street, have a display of what you see here today, including the correspondence that's taken place with the city council starting in October, and that might be interesting for any council people or anybody in the audience in the future to come in and look at. I'm there most of the time, and I'd be happy to explain anything to anyone who has that level of interest. I have a update, which I'll give to the city council at the completion of my presentation, and I won't give it to you now, because I don't want you reading it there while I'm giving my presentation. I know how that happens, having sat in board meetings. But I do have that, and it reflects my kind of final recommendation, and that's in response to a lot of questions I've had over the last couple of months with regard to the project. As you know, I have no interest, and I want to be clear, architecturally or professionally in this project. This is strictly, I'm donating this time to the city, and for obvious reasons of wanting to seek some excellence in our city planning and in our spending. I am opposed to, we've got to get started if, even if we're in the wrong direction. I know all of you don't agree that you're going in the wrong direction, but I hope that after this presentation, that we can stand back and perhaps take a look at what we've done. I think the money you've spent to date is probably the best money spent, because a lot of the work we did over the years, we did to show what we shouldn't do perhaps, rather than what we should do. In most corporations, after you've gone through a planning and you find out something doesn't work, that's worthwhile to spend that money to find out what perhaps you shouldn't do. My first interest in this came about, excuse me, I'm not accustomed to this, I was concerned about the operations, and did some analysis, the building department, the planning department, and public works department, and coordination and work, and that was an eye-opener, because I found that there was no scheduling and coordination of the individual permits and so forth. I had the opportunity to put a job through, and I kept careful notes, and many times the project would be ready to pick up through building, and there was, planning didn't know they had the job, or public works didn't know they had the job, or even claimed they didn't get it. And so that was kind of discouraging. The other thing that I noticed, and of course was well-published, were the offices with things stacked under a table like this, as far back as you could see, and that seemed to me to be a housekeeping issue, and perhaps there was a lot of dead storage there that could have been almost anywhere, but the offices were jammed, and I think probably some quite legitimately, that things got carried in there that couldn't be done. So there were some indications that schedules weren't, couldn't be kept. And then the second issue was the one of personnel schedules, the flex work week and so forth, when people go in and, on a late Wednesday, the person they have to see is out on Friday. In the building department, the person they have to see is out on Monday in the planning department. So our people that we're serving have to get their work done between Tuesday morning and Thursday night. I know even in your internal functions, it's sometimes necess, you can't put a meeting together on a Friday or a Monday, but that kind of triggered my looking at the operations. And so that led me to, then when I heard that the city council was, or you're set on building the city hall on this site, I started looking at the process of planning and space requirements and so forth, and I didn't, to this day, find anything that referenced the processes that were taking place in the city hall. The reports I saw were just space planning, and those are rather standards for BOMA and so forth that were being pursued. And that then led me to looking at the city hall plans, and to see if the city hall really should be here in the first place. Obviously, if you're looking at a city hall to serve the entire city, the first thing you'd look at would be where it should be, just geographically. And the city hall now, on the map on the, whoop, map on the wall, I can, yeah, there we go, right about here. And so I started looking at the center of the city, and of course, it was no surprise that it's near Newport Center. And a parcel of property above the library is a rather long, I think it's 1,500 feet long parcel of land, and I'll address that in a moment. Seemed to be the city hall, and thought, maybe there's an opportunity to place the city hall, or as I called it, probably self-servingly, city hall on the green. And maybe there could be some opportunity to cooperate and make that park into a usable park, but also make it into a delightful city hall location. Building public buildings on public property is certainly done often, and we have some examples right here in Newport Beach, like the Muth Center, the lifeguard station by the pier, and more recently, the new, I think just started laboratory building up in Shellmaker Island. We also have rowing clubs and so forth, and they're all, I believe, on public property. But I think there has to be a benefit for everybody, and the whole purpose of this is the maximum number of people that it can serve without compromising anybody ideally, but hopefully the very fewest. And that was the purpose of my getting involved and trying to seek a site. Secondly, I think in today's society, you wouldn't put the city hall here under any circumstances. If you walked into the city and it was a vacant piece of property, you wouldn't think to put the city hall here for a lot of reasons, but just for disaster and preparedness. A city hall, in case of any kind of catastrophe, has to be accept, accessible and operating under almost any circumstances. There's a lot better chance that that would happen, I wish I knew how to turn this though, whoop. There's a lot better chance that that would happen in the location in Newport Center than here. All you'd have to do would even have the highway bridge collapse, and you'd have a very difficult time getting away from here. The other thing, of course, is the access for people from outside of town, contractors and all the people in the city to the site, to best serve the people. Excuse me, am I doing something wrong with this? I can't get my pointer. Right? Work the line. So that indicates the center and the parcel that I proposed we consider for the city hall. I made some comments in my first report after the couple of correspondence, and that was with regarding architecture. But that is down the line to, the only reason I said that was a philosophy that I don't believe that the city in Newport Beach needs a monument, and I hope we don't try to bring in elements of sailboats and all into the architecture. I thought a constrained architecture, more sophisticated architecture, might be what we should have. There was no intent to design the building, because some people indicated that they didn't like my building. I don't remember designing one. So what I did, excuse me, next is I took a look at the city hall plan, and from that, critically looked at the exchange of property and so forth, and noticed that the yellow line here is the existing city hall property line with the parking behind the city hall and all, and the red is the new city hall line, property line, I guess, call it for the moment. And this yellow, there now on the city hall property, there's an easement for the neighboring market. This line, and right here, it should also have been yellow, that is the extent of the fire station property, and this area back here belongs to the market. So the exchange of property is very close and proper there, where the market takes that property and we get this piece of property here, and erase the easement. But all it really did was move the easement over a little bit, and the fire station still has to use this part, and so we don't gain much by giving up that easement, and I worry that perhaps it was treated as property that was owned by the neighbor. But the most startling thing about this, are two things about this plan. Number one, the fire station is jammed in this area back here, and I believe inadequate for access and so forth, perhaps barely acceptable. I think it's about .8 acres, and I believe that is not by any standard adequate for a fire station. However, the thing that amazed me is that the entrance off of Findley Street, that in planning our city hall, we're saying that it is not a needed entrance for the city hall property, except for the trash truck, and that becomes the exclusive entrance for the market property. It's hard to believe that we could come up with that conclusion if in fact, this property is adequate to support the city hall. There were a couple of questions about my plan, or a concept, and that was that the, it's an awfully long plan, the building I expressed on my plot plans, and that people would need a segway to get around, and that's not a bad idea. However, this building is only 24 feet shorter than the building I proposed, and this is a two-story building, so you'd have to take your segway upstairs. So I think my one story is more efficient. Or take the elevator. To move on, I've tried to address as many things as possible, and I think you should address everybody's concern, but I know we can't satisfy everybody, but perhaps we can satisfy the community. So I've tried to provide opportunities and recognize that the opportunity one person may not be acceptable to another. I would like to say that I do think the avocado site is the best site. There was a reason why there, it was determined that the library should be at the center of town. There were some very astute business people who thought the Chamber Commerce Building should be at the center of town, and I think probably the Irvine Company guessed that as well. Next, I started looking at the park plans, and I have some, the part of the, rest of the park plan here, and I felt that maybe this was an opportunity to help the parks as well as the, citing the city hall there. If this is a view park, I know it isn't a neighborhood park, because number one, there is no access provided to it, practical access to get people to it. And like the old tree falling in the forest, is there a sound if nobody's there? Is there a view if nobody's in the park? And I think the object of a community park is to get people into the park. And I thought how nice it might be to share that park with the city hall in this area, with all of our employees. There must be some advantage in having the city hall and the library together, because you can share parking and event parking and so forth. And also, in looking at this plan, the real only access for automobiles to this park is right in this area here. You can't read this too well, but I put some elevations on this drawing, and these are from the survey. This location driveway here and parking is essentially, as shown, at 135, and that's above sea level, and that is elevation here, 135 at the library floor, and at this generally slight slopes in the parking, but as you know, parking areas can't slope very much. This intersection here is about 165. The high point is up here in this general area of about 192. This area here is 180, and this area here is 170. There's a little amphitheater shown here, and there is a trail going right up here, a ramp with flat areas every so often. This area here is 180, and that area here and this here are about even. I'll show you a picture taken from up here. This is at 200, this is 205, and this is 210. This is 205, 200, and 195. So these areas here all look over this area. The only access that I see is into here off of Farallon, and I've avoided getting into whether it helps to turn on or off from MacArthur and access and so forth, because that's another issue, and we're not there yet. And I think we have to look at the simple issues first. When I say there's no access, I think people with special needs and handicap and so forth, or even older people or families with picnics have to have a way to get to the park. From here up to this point where the path ends, the elevation changes 35 or 6 feet, and that is the floor of a four-story building. That's a long way up, especially with a ramp. The ramp shown here is only 360 or 70 feet, as I recall, and that's a 10% slope, so it doesn't make any sense. On the plan that I showed, concept plan for the development in this area, I showed parking of about 80 cars, and, oh, let me go back here just a second. These are views taken from the three spots that I've shown, here, here, or see, probably here, here, and from either this spot or this spot, and I suspect this spot. You can see that culvert in these two pictures here, right there and right there, and that's the culvert that is right here. So you're looking from here and here, down this way toward the ocean, right across the site where I would propose putting the city hall. This bluff, this ridge you see here, going down to, this is the signal right here, you can see the signal there, and right here, approximately at Farallon. And that ridge is this ridge right here, about 180 to 192. The proposal I have is that the entire city hall at this point here would be about between 12 to 14 feet below that line, so you'd look straight across the city hall from anywhere, even from here, 180, that would be about elevation of your feet would be the city hall roof, and the same way at this point here. So those are the views I'm talking about. That is that ridge, and the city hall roof would be about even with the grade there, and about 14 feet below the grade up at this point. We would pre, in, let me go on with the next plan here, if I can remember. I'll go ahead here just to give you a feel of what we're talking about. There's some question and course about how much parking the park would need, and if the park said they didn't, I think the park should have parking in the center as close to access both ways as possible, but that's debatable, and I think we should always question those things. You could keep the trails that the park shows up through here, and if we wanted to connect around the city hall, we could do. around the city hall, we could do that. There's a lot of options. This is a concept. I showed a footprint only of a one-story building, and there's an opportunity you could put partially two-story, if there's some reason for it, to get a view. And I'm not trying to build a view where employees would sit all day and look out the window at all. But you certainly, if you stand up or maybe even sitting at your desk, you would be looking across all these buildings here, and we would not be high enough, of course, to look across the library, because it's up at the view plane. I didn't have to be told by anybody because of past experience that people that live on a hillside above something or considered are very concerned about the view. And we've totally respected that view and have, would remove quite a bit, a lot of dirt here, about 130,000 yards for, to lower this building, the city hall building, and to put the parking structure in here. So if you have a good idea of how this fits on the site now, I'd like to go back to the plan and cross-section. This is a plan, and it's shown on the topo maps, and the parking structure would step down this area here and in order to get down to city hall level. We would retain the berm all along MacArthur Boulevard, and when you drive down MacArthur Boulevard, it will look just like it does now. And when you get to this point where those pictures were taken, instead of looking at this bluff here, you would see directly across the city hall out toward the ocean. Maybe you'd see the back end of the library, but I don't think so, because the top of it is at 170, I believe. Now, there's a couple of sections I've taken, oh, incidentally, these are the view planes. That is 180, this is 185, 190, and 195. And the building is below all these view planes, getting within a couple of feet here and being about 12 feet below the view plane here. And so I've been totally responsive to that. This is a section taken through the building from east to west. This is MacArthur Boulevard, this is the top of that berm, and this is the city hall, and this is Avocado Avenue. This is a section taken from north to south, and this would be the library over here, this is the parking structure, this would be the city hall. And my reason for suggesting a one-story city hall is, of course, it fits best on here, although back in this area, we, if people wanted to have a two-story, but I'm not in favor of that. There've been a lot of suggestions about planting the roof and so forth, but that's also, I believe, down the line. There are a lot of cost benefits in doing a one-story building and doing a building other than on this site. Many of them have been discussed, and there are many of them are quite obvious. Number one, a single-story building has a lot of flexibility. Footings are easy to do, it's quick to design, you don't have elevators and maintenance and issues like that. You can have some beautiful atriums in the building. You could raise this floor in an area to have an employee's lounge or whatever you want to do in order to get a little better view. And so you can respond to those kind of issues. We do provide a library link over here, and I believe you'd want to do that, to have a path over to the library for the benefit of the library people that want to walk the site, or people from the city hall that want to go to the library. There'd be a tremendous benefit to not interrupting the city hall functions for a couple of years, and you will interrupt them for a couple of years. You're not going to build any, tear down this city hall and build a new one in 12 months or so. It's just unrealistic to be that optimistic, especially in today's arena. Not having to move is a huge issue. To go out and find places to put this city hall function is, will be extremely expensive and time-consuming and distraction to all of the staff. But if you think that's bad, where do you put a fire station? You can't go out and rent one of those for a couple of years. And that's going to be a very difficult issue, to have a fire station close by down here. I mentioned in doing this, because somebody, and it wasn't anybody I talked to, but in conversation, somebody said, "Oh, good, if we do this plan, we can sell the city hall property and pay for the city hall." So in my report to you, I said, "A free city hall." Well, that had a nice ring to it, but in fact, a lot of people said, "Well, we don't need a new city hall. The important thing is to get it in the right place and have the proper city hall." And so I pretty much agree with that. The one other benefit that I want to go back to, and I may have mentioned it earlier, was the fact that I think if we build a city hall on this property, we can incorporate the cost of really doing the park correctly. And I think this community could be a hallmark expression of how to use native landscaping. And what a better spot to have people see it than around your city hall, than have a really healthy native landscape city hall with trails and all around it. I think you'd have everybody to come to see what else Newport Beach has done well. One, before I move on, there's just a couple more slides. One other thing I want to express is, I hope there isn't too much of an urgency to build the park just because we're looking at it, or I'm looking at it at this point, as a potential site to include the city hall. But the, this plan, by my calculations, indicates the removal of about 35,000 yards of dirt. That is a major concern in a park plan, not so much in the city hall plan, because of the magnitude of the overall project. If you look at this elevation, 135, and you go in the library, there's a very steep bluff that comes up here to 155, then it goes from here to 180. And this would have to be at roughly 135, and then this slopes back. If you put parking in here, no matter how you do it, just about, depending on the size of the parking area, but I think you'd, for a park this size, you'd want at least 30 or 40 cars for park use. And you'd have to remove about another, I think, 18,000 yards. For a total to make this park into a usable park, assuming that you do the library parking as well, would remove about 50,000 yards or 52,000 yards, which is about a third of what we plan to do on the library site. I mean, on the, if we put the city hall in this location. This was in my presentation, and that you have a copy of, and this is what I was speaking of earlier. I don't want to get into architecture, but I merely said that if this building is good enough for a multi-billion dollar company and a one-story building to operate, part of their operations in, it was designed by a world-famous architect, Bill Pereira, with a world-famous architect, or rather sculpture, Tom Van Sant. I thought the building, and I just superimposed that building here with the MacArthur bluff in the back of it, why maybe it would be a nice place to have the history of Newport Beach in these panels. And that kind of building with natural sandblasted panels would fit in well with a park environment. Now, I have a proposal that takes all of this and summarizes it, and I think I'm about on schedule. I would propose the site that I just described for the city hall, basically as I described it. And the proposal is, and it's not my idea, it came from people, the idea came, not, I couldn't make a deal, unfortunately, but from people that would basically be opposed to this, using this site, park site, to include the city hall. And that is, if we are using a part of this park site, we should not sell the site here, because that is just sort of a way of selling public property. And I think I agree with that. So the proposal I have is to trade, and what I did here was take the city hall site, we don't have to move any property lines or anything, make this into an urban park. I would keep this council chamber as a community room or community meeting space. I would keep the lobby of the city hall and the tower. And that would memorialize the city hall and its location and add some paving. And I would, if I were doing this on my own, I'd put a Pete's Coffee Shop in there and make this into a beautiful urban park for art walks and those kinds of activities. It also opens this up for an appropriate fire station, not jamming the fire station over into a tiny corner here, which is inappropriate. I didn't try to get into planning that area here, but I'm sure there's always need for parking, and it could even be justified, parking for the park here and taking away some parking here and making more green space. Obviously, it would be a waste of time at this point to get into talking about parking cars or how many cars you need for the park or the activities that might take place. But I would submit to you that this could be very viable for the entire community, both from a cost standpoint, from the lack of intrusion into the next two years of operating the city hall, and concern, I think, for everybody, which I've tried to express in any of the planning I've done to date. I think it could be an opportunity to unify the city behind having a first-class park, first-class city hall, and a first-class second urban park on the peninsula. I think we could work together to do this. I know there's an urgency now for this council to get a city hall built, because it's been five years in the planning, and there've been a lot of delays. But I don't feel what you have now is a good plan. It's going to be extremely expensive. It's going to be, affect too many people in the operation of the city hall. But most importantly, I think, whatever we do, we should pursue excellence for our city. And what I see being pursued now is not excellence or orderly pursuit. I'm willing to volunteer more of my time, I'd like to be helpful, and my intent, as you know from my original letter, was not to be a critic, but to express concerns to be addressed in a professional manner. And if we somewhat agree, and I would hope maybe all of us agree, even including the city council on this point, is that if we put it up to a vote, it'll satisfy a lot of people. That will have, the entire community will have an opportunity to vote on it, and I think it could be presented in a pretty simple manner, and I would be happy to help pursue that. I have, I'll give these reports to you. I've got about 10 of them here, so. They're a summary of my recommendation, and you have all of the other letters that I've written and reports and follow-ups. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you'd have, or if you're tired of hearing me, I'll be happy to, you can call me.
Thank you a lot, Bill. I would like to give the council an opportunity to ask a few questions. Does anybody want to start off?
Mr. Ray?
Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Bill. That was an excellent presentation. I appreciate you coming down here and putting this together for us. As I understand the budget for your facility, the cost of excavation and grading is somewhere upwards of $2 million. Is that what it would take to move 157,000 cubic yards of soil to prep the site?
Let me, I don't want to go from memory, but you probably have in front of you my magnitude of cost. Yeah, I think, I have it here in just a moment. Yeah, I have grading here at $2 million, yes. 157,000 cubic yards at $15 a yard.
And in thinking about prepping for the site, have you considered costs that may be involved with either endangered species or other specific environmental mitigations that would be required here?
No, no, I haven't considered that at all.
And as I understand the design of the site, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your position is, is that the design is flexible, it can be whatever you want it to be. It could be one story, it could be built into the hill, it could be two stories, it could be...
Yeah. What I tried to express is a practical, straightforward design that reflected or met the requirements of the view plane and simplicity. And I'm kind of a minimalist, so I like to see things done in a fairly straightforward way, because the more you complicate them in design, the less you control the costs.
Right.
So if you start digging in and building basements, number one, you get spaces that aren't very pleasant, and I wanted to have light all the way around the building and keep it simple. So I have no, the design of the building, the architecture, is the next step for someone else to do.
It could be something different, but it's...
Yeah, I have no, it could be something very different.
Right.
I just expressed the philosophy.
Uh-huh. And to understand, for the people at home, sort of the magnitude of the size of the building, it's, as I look at it, it's something on the order of, you know, just under 300 yards or 300 feet each side.
300 feet.
Roughly about the distance of a football field, maybe a little shorter.
About, it's about 300 by 200.
300 by 200, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I have a question. Why don't you put your site plan back up? What square footage were you figuring at for...
Oh, you mean the...
For the city hall site?
That's planned there.
That's fine.
Okay.
What square footage were you figuring for the footprint?
What I actually show here is 68,000 square feet. The magnitude, as I understood it, of the city hall is about 70,000, give or take a couple. So I, I don't think in a building this size, why it's worthwhile fooling around to try to get a couple thousand square feet.
If you were to take this portion here and make that two-story to where you went down into the ground and excavated this out farther, again, more excavation, but you could have an outside edge facing Avocado and the library, do you think that, is that a feasible design?
You know, there's a huge amount of flexibility, but I would hesitate to get into, into reflecting on that, because when you start to excavate and having a building stepping down a grade, you get retaining walls and dark places in the back of the building. That's not necessarily bad, but those would be details that would be reflected by the operation. One thing that might provide that would be if you wanted to step down, you'd probably go back here and build an atrium that went down two floors. There'd be a two-story atrium, and that would give light from these offices here and... There'd be a two-story atrium, and that would give light from these offices here, and it could be, you know, there's tremendous opportunities to do things here. And also, from this area where you're well below the site, really, we wouldn't have to raise it, because I showed the building 20 feet high purposely, so it'd give you an opportunity to have a slightly higher floor in an area here if you wanted to, and still respect the site planes and all. There's a, all the flexibility in the world you'd like. Or if you don't need all this parking here, which I think is excessive for the City Hall, but I put it there primarily for the best access for the park, you could run this road in here like this. I think it's important to get a, some parking area in this area to get people up to, to the park, and...
I guess one of the reasons why I was suggesting...
Yeah.
Something in here is you could have a smaller footprint.
Yeah.
To where you could move the parking in, and you could end up...
That's exactly right.
Dueling.
You could do things, you could make the smaller footprint, if you so desire. I was trying to take the most simplistic way and not have anybody come back and say, "Well, you just showed a little footprint, but it's not really practical."
Okay. Another item is that, that one of the comments that I've heard is that we have a wonderful view from up there, and if we put the City Hall on the site, that view goes away. I've mentioned this before to several people, but if we were to take and make an urban park on the roof up there to where you could have planters and, and spaces that pedestrians could use, would, would that significantly increase the construction costs to get either an elevator up there, stairs, or ramps, or whatever?
Well, there are a couple of things. I've had a couple of very well-known architects comment and suggest that there ought to be a turf roof and access up there, and so forth. Again, I tried not to get into the design of the building and establish some priorities. And ultimately, when you talk about the design of the building and the priorities, they're going to get involved in costs, and you'll say, "How many people are going to go up there, and is it worth the cost of the elevator?", and things like that. So I think the important, we will be, there's a path shown in the, well, yeah, in the park plan, and we can also reconfigure this slightly to include a path here, just as the park plan shows, to get up to the maximum height, which will be way above the City Hall for the park visitors. But you have to get people up there. And if you, and that means getting cars up to about a 180 elevation or something like that, so they're up there at the view plane. It's interesting that the pictures that are, I showed, these pictures here were taken from the higher spot, and that they weren't taken from the area that we're trying to preserve as a view plane. And sometimes those things tell more of a story than we realize. Whoever went out there to depict the wonderful views and all of the park, actually took the pictures from, from this area, here, and not from there. And probably because it was very difficult to get up here. There's no place to park, as there, there'll be a place to park down here, but it's not going to make it a lot easier to get up there. So those are little things, they're not, I wouldn't debate them with anybody, because they, I think they have, what you're saying has validity, and there's a, you hit right on it. I think there are a lot of opportunities to do something to serve everybody in the community, and perhaps people with fairly strong and different viewpoints.
Okay. Any of the council members have any questions? Councilmember Daigle?
I appreciate the time and the thought that you put into this, and I know I heard the presentation earlier today. And I think one of the benefits of your presentation is it raises questions about the suitability of this site. So I wanted to thank you about, for coming in and...
Appreciate that.
And for all the information that you've developed on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Councilmember Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Bill, one quick question. It looks like there's about 300 spaces there, parking spaces between the two lots. Is that morally correct?
That's correct, yes.
And they're all accessing the site off of Avocado and Fairlon there, is that correct?
No, they're...
Raffle of Avocado, right?
They're both accessible in one way or another. This, obviously, if somebody parks in this area, I think you'd have to assume that they would come in and act, and exit at Fairlon. People could come into the parking structure through the back door here, just as anticipated. Or they could come through the library parking lot down this way, as I believe the park plan shows, and enter the parking structure, and then ramp up to this area here. The, this, there would be ramps, and I didn't try to get into the design of the parking structure. It could be a warped, a plain parking structure, or ramps that I'm more familiar with.
Right.
But this would be a fairly easy parking structure to get up to the top level.
And I would not expect you to have them, but I'll ask, do you, do you have a census to the traffic counts that would be related to this site?
No, I haven't done any traffic analysis at all. I think the, your intuition would probably tell you that if you were trying to do something for traffic in Newport Beach, you'd rather have the City Hall on that site than here. And that's just what we call by inspection, so...
Bill is one of our 80,000 traffic engineers that lives in Newport Beach? Isn't that correct?
Yeah. There, I said that was the end, but I missed something here, and I think it deserves answer, because I had some questions. I talked to the one about building on city land, addressed that, or selling land, and, but there's been a question about water on the site, and I just want to express that because there, apparently there's water and dampness in the basement of the, of the library. But again, your question about the traffic, by inspection, you would not, you wouldn't guess, or any professional would be concerned in looking at this site, that there would be water that would provide, that would be any problem for construction. There are buildings built below the water table all over this town, and I truly mean water table. Dampness from irrigation and all runs down to the low spot. If you have a basement around your house, you'll, you've got to waterproof it and have a sump. In Irvine Terrace, all the houses, as the terraces down, had dampness around their footings and all, until they put in a drain around it. Normally, if there's a problem of dampness in a basement or around a building, it's due to design or improper waterproofing or drainage. This site is at the top of a hill, and very seldom does water accumulate toward the top of a hill. And you don't see water running out of this side of the hill down on Avocado, or up on MacArthur, or even on the bluff down toward the library.
I think that...
So it isn't a, something that would pop into your mind and say... We had, incidentally, I was involved in the conversion of Granville, and we had dampness, and there was a rumor that there was a river running underground by Granville. And of course, we found exactly what I'm talking about, is that when the, it was dug away, there were no drains or proper waterproofing or anything, and that's been resolved.
I believe that you, did you mention that the, the library parking lot was about elevation 134?
135.
135? Well, the basement where they're having water problems is about 15 feet below that.
Oh.
And so that that's at elevation about 120, which is going to be at least 40 feet lower than even a, if you had a second-story facility. So that I don't, I would tend to agree with you that the water problems that you might have in there are not going to...
Yeah. It certainly wouldn't be something that a group of professionals would look at and say, be concerned about. There was one other...
Okay. Well, we, we need to move forward, because I think there's some other people that would like to make a presentation about, what I'd like to do is, is I was requested to allow somebody to talk about the park process, and then I think what we can do after that is, is receive comments on whatever we've presented, and then the council can give guidance, if that's all right with the council. Does that seem to be, okay. Who is going to represent?
Oh, excuse me, there was just one last thing, and this is just a reference, and I'm sorry. Somebody asked to show approximately the portion of land, if, if we look at it as a trade.
Okay.
And if I go back to this, can I get a little dim there, so, dimmer? I took this portion in order to be, I didn't want to come up and say, "Yes, you've included the fire station" or anything, but I said, "This is the park." Or I guess this area here, yeah, because we can do away with the parking, whatever you want to do, but generally, this is the area. And I put that into a rectangle and overlaid it on the plan which you saw earlier, and that is this cut-out piece of cardboard here. So you can see that it's a pretty good nominal trade, land for land, and that's what I was, wanted to express.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who is going to make the presentation, Debbie? Ms. Allen?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. As the mayor just said, we were asked to make a presentation on the park and the planning process. In 2004, the council approved an agreement with Hall &amp; Foreman to begin concept development plans for this area as an open space park. And they began their work after some extensive community outreach processes. And this afternoon, we've asked Mark Reader from Hall &amp; Foreman to come and give you an overview of the concept plan that currently exists for the park. And then after that, I believe members of the Parks Commission, Beaches and Recreation Commission would like to say a few words. But I do want to state that Mr. Reader is not here to comment on Mr. Fickers' plan, because he just saw the plan as, as the rest of us did, but he's just going to review the concept development and where we are today with that. And then obviously, we are here to answer any questions.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city staff, and concerned citizens. I'm Mark Reader with Hall &amp; Foreman. I'm the civil engineering consultant for the Newport Center Park project. As Marie stated, I have been involved with the project since July of 2004. At that time, we were retained as a consultant by the City of Newport Beach to take some previous illustrations that were prepared for SPON and EPT for the park, and move that forward into some conceptual design plans. We also worked with two other consultants, JHA Consulting, the landscape architect, and also MBA Consulting, environmental consultants. Neither of those are here today. The park is divided into these areas here, the riparian wetlands areas, this north-south one, and also the riparian area that runs east-west. We've always considered this portion of the park above the riparian area here to be the northern portion of the park, and of course, this area here, the southern portion of the park. In our current designs, we have kept the coastal sage scrub that is in the northern portion of the park, and just proposed a meandering dirt trail with accesses off MacArthur and at the corner here, and also off of Avocado at that point, for people that want to take a nature walk through the existing habitat. Let me go to the next slide. Our, our environmental consultant, MBA, prepared two reports, a wetlands delineation report and a biological assessment study. What those studies told us was where these environmentally sensitive areas are in terms of Army Corps of Engineer and California Department of Fish and Game. When we got into the design of the park, we used an avoidance scenario where we are avoiding these environmentally sensitive areas, so that any construction of the park would not impact the environmentally sensitive areas. And again, here are just some photographs of those natural area habitats.
And where are they on your site map?
These are located here, the light green area there, and right here.
So Mark, are you saying that the southern portion is not in an environmentally sensitive area?
This is the, some photographs of what the southern portion of the park would look like. It's a passive park with a lawn area, with concrete walkways for pedestrians and joggers to enjoy the turf area. Also, there are some fantastic views from up on top of the bluff that this park was to incorporate. You'll notice from this photograph that there are trees. When we've designed the park, we eliminated any trees up on the upper portions of the southern area to respect the view planes for the Harborview Community Association on the side of MacArthur. One of the features of the park would be to, at several locations throughout the park, we could do some private gardens, where if a donor wanted to come in and create a private space, design their own garden, have a plaque, maybe it could be something in memoriam, this could create some potential funding for the park. One of the concepts that was discussed was making the park tie-in to the Central Library project. In this area here, we have a parking lot. We'll continue the landscaping that's in the library parking lot around to the northern side. That parking lot would park about 104 cars. That would be for shared parking for the library as well as the park project. We also, in the design, took a look at the lighting, that we would use minimal glare lighting, again, to respect the neighbors' views, nighttime views, and minimize glare. As was mentioned earlier, from the library parking lot up to where the amphitheater is, which I'll discuss in a little bit here, there is about a 30 to 35-foot elevation difference. The design is to construct a slope, and that's going to be a contoured slope. We start off with a four-to-one in the center, and bend that around to about a two-to-one. In the center of the slope area, four-to-one, we can construct that with turf grass to kind of extend that park right down to the library parking lot. And then when it gets a little bit steeper, out at these edges here and here, we can do more ornamental landscaping and trees. Again, the trees would respect the view planes of the neighbors.
Could I ask a question?
Now.
Yes. Where are you showing that parking lot? At the back of the library, you go up a 45-degree slope to get to the top. So how much would you be removing in cubic yardage to make this part?
We're going to cut about 70,000 cubic yards, and then we can reuse about 11,000 cubic yards of that cut back onto the park site to create some of the contoured grading that we want to do for the lawn area.
So 70,000 cubic yards? So 70,000 cubic yards?
That's correct.
But it's still a pretty, I mean, would you say it's a pretty steep walk? I mean, generally? Would someone in a wheelchair be able to really wheel up there?
That would not change the slope that you would have to go to go up to get to the park, because you're really just presenting a flat space there at the bottom for your parking, right?
Right. Let me do this. I'm going to jump to another slide. Okay. In terms of access, we've got the handicap parking stalls here. Here is the amphitheater at this portion of the site. City staff, myself, and the landscape architect walked the site. And from this location here, it's just a fabulous view of the Pacific Ocean. And on a clear day, I think we were out there in October one day, and Catalina Island was just, just in all its glory. But there's two ways to get up to the amphitheater. One is to take a set of stairs. That would probably be for, you know, some fitness enthusiasts that would want to use the stairs. In terms of Americans, or in terms of maybe disabled person, we have a ramp that would serpentine up to the amphitheater. Currently, the status of the project is that final engineering plans have been submitted to the city. That ramp has been designed to Americans with Disabilities Act guidelines. Basically, what that means is we're ramping at about 8%. And every 30 feet, we put in a five-foot, or I should say, every 30 feet in length, we put in a five-foot landing. So under the ADA guidelines, that ramp does meet the federal guidelines for, for someone with disabilities.
So that's about a 500-foot long ramp if you have to go up 40 feet?
I'm, I'm not sure of the length, but it is a distance, yes.
That'd be 8%.
And that's, and that's all the access, either the stairs or the handicap ramp?
Well, to, to the amphitheater, there's also access from MacArthur Boulevard, and there's also access off of Avocado and Fair Lawn to the southern portion.
But there's no real parking there?
There, there is street parking on Avocado up to Fair Lawn, and I believe as you go north of Fair Lawn, there is some no parking on Avocado at that point.
But isn't there a fairly steep slope all along Avocado? I'm trying to visualize it.
As, that's true. As Avocado approaches Fair Lawn, the elevations start to line up, match up. So from Fair Lawn, you're almost, there's not much of a grade right there.
When you were designing this, was there consideration given to parking area off of Fair Lawn?
Yes.
More to the level?
That, that's, that's correct. When we started the project, we did analyze bringing in a parking lot onto the park. And it was decided, maybe for aesthetic reasons, for the park, not to provide that parking. That parking lot could be added back in and access could be achieved. So I, it's not undoable to.
Just again, though, the present library building along the backside has about a two- or three-foot walk. And at that point, you can almost reach out and touch the slope.
Correct.
And you have to scramble to go up the slope. So it's a, I mean, it's a 30-degree minimum, probably a 40, 45-degree slope up there. So that entire area that you're showing with parking spaces would all be cut back into that slope, very similar to what would be done to provide the, the two-story parking standard, I mean, parking structure that we were talking about otherwise.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, and that would be your 70,000. So any water problems that might be experienced by the parking lot on the property of, of the City Hall would be experienced by this as well?
That, that's, I'm not familiar with the water problems that City Hall has, so it's hard.
No, I mean, the library supposedly has.
Oh, I see.
Anything they have, you would be at approximately the entrance to the back of the library there, which is at the base of the building. So you would be at that base all the way across. So any, any, and, which is exactly the same base that they were talking with for the parking structure of City Hall, I think.
Councilman Nichols, the, the library does have a basement, and that's where the water problem is.
I see.
It, it's really below grade, about 15 feet. So that, let us proceed on the presentation.
Sure, and I just would, would like to just add a quick note that with the design of the parking lot, and again, the plans are in final engineering, we provided adequate slope to that parking lot and added a storm drain system in that parking lot with catch basins to collect water. This is the concept for the amphitheater. It's terraced seating with, with turf. The amphitheater that we have designed for the site would hold about 80 to 100 people. Again, this provides some connectivity to the library. The library could have outdoor, use this outdoor amphitheater for any of their various functions. You could also maybe set up chairs if the city wanted to give a permit, maybe for a small wedding or something like that.
Would you really be able to have trees of that magnitude and still stay out of the site plane?
No, the, the trees we have proposed are umbrella trees. This photograph was taken by our landscape architect, and this amphitheater is in Dana Point, I believe, at a park there. So the, the trees, again, that we have around the amphitheater would respect the view planes to the neighbors.
What is, what are the elevations of the amphitheater?
The amphitheater is probably at about 165, 170.
This would be the bottom of it, or the top, this?
The.
Because it runs up to the grassy knoll above, right?
Correct. The, the bottom, this, this circle that you see right there would be the bottom area here.
Well, I, I'm certain, I, I really meant the natural amphitheater that was created in the back that had some possibility of use as a park amphitheater. I mean, it's, that's pretty big, and it looks like it would be a beautiful spot for large concerts, maybe 300, 400 people or something.
Well, that's, that's true. There, there is some slope built behind the amphitheater. Northerly, the amphitheater, let me just mention and go to the next slide, that there's a proposed arbor structure here. So maybe a disadvantage to the arbor structure would be that if people are sitting behind it, it might block views down to the stage below. But the amphitheater is designed to give some, or the arbor structure is designed to give some shade and an aesthetic look to the amphitheater. Again, from the landscape architect's point of view, he's carrying the, the look of the design of the library up to the amphitheater and into the arbor structure. As you can see here. That appears to be the end of the slideshow. I'm really here to answer any questions that anybody may have regarding the design of the park.
Councilmember Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is the nature of the sensitive habitat that we have in the northern end of the park? Can you sort of describe that for us, please?
The, the nature of the habitat is protected wetlands. In terms of the, the animal species and the plant species, that's in the environmental reports. And I wish I had my environmental consultant with me today to better answer that.
Councilmember Selig?
Last fall, you had done some concept sketches of, on the northern part of the park, of developing some plant communities and perimeter treatment and trails and seating areas up there. Did you bring any of that information with you today?
I believe that's what's on this board here. I don't know if you can see it.
Maybe you can explain what you were working on, on that part of it?
But our, our, that's, that's correct. Last fall, our landscape architect has prepared some concepts to remove the coastal sage scrub that's in the area now and put in California native landscaping.
Could you go back to the park general site plan? One more. Okay, now, show us on that map where you're talking about removing sage and that type of stuff.
Yes, there's a, a concept that our landscape architect has submitted to the city. And that concept would be to still protect the wetland and riparian areas here. And up on the bluffs, come and remove the coastal sage scrub and do more of a California native garden park. Jess, the landscape architect, tells me that there's a California native park up in Clermont, California. He'd like to model something like that. Again, people could walk on trails and have placards and view the, the different type of California native plantings. And, and again, the, the northern portion is referred to the area north of this east-west riparian area here.
Are you aware of there being any particular plant material or life in this area? This is part of the southern portion that needs to be protected?
There, there is some coastal sage scrub in this area that we would affect, with our current design, would be affected with construction of the park. That, the removal of that coastal sage scrub, as, as well as the removal of this area as well, could be mitigated. And there's a fee of $50,000 per acre to remove the coastal sage scrub. And that fee would be paid to, and be a part of the NCCP program.
Okay. Any other council members have questions? Because I want, I want to give the PBNR people a chance to, to comment. Mr. Nichols?
I understand the north-south swale in there. It, that's actually the end of the drainage ditch of the property up above, right? So that, basically, it's not, it doesn't have, it, it's just that the property underneath the bus station down that comes down, basically, that side of Avocado, and then goes underground and comes out below here, right?
Correct. That is due to the outlet of the city storm drain system.
So, so that, that is really a storm drain swale. And at the entrance over here by Avocado, there is a, what do you call the vertical?
Catch basin.
The catch basin for overflow when the swale fills up on a very big rain, essentially.
Right, that, that's correct. The city storm drain system picks up again.
And the other end of that at MacArthur has a, a pretty good-sized wall at, at present. And that is mostly pavement-type materials, is it not, where it comes out of MacArthur? And there's a, what, I think about a 16- or 18-inch culvert that comes out right now and just goes into the, the swale.
Correct. You're talking about at this location here?
Right.
Right. I know the storm drain comes through this area and runs through San Miguel.
Actually, the storm drain, actually, the storm drain comes from the track that's over here.
Yes.
This, this, this piece here, there's a drain that goes underneath right there that goes, doesn't go up to the transportation center, but it goes up to this site. This one here drains a fairly good portion of the area between San Miguel, Crown Drive, and down around. And it all outlets at this point and ultimately ends up at the El Paso Storm Drain at Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club.
Is that the Bahia Corinthian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need to get, move forward because we're running out of time for letting people talk about this. So could we, who is next on your list of, for presentations?
Mr. Mayor, you might want to just continue the other item that we have that would come after this one and, and.
Well, that was the Newport Coast parks. Is anybody here that, to talk about Newport Coast parks? Yeah, we're going to continue that to the next study session so that we can continue to get information on this, this plan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Deborah Allen. I'm the chair of your park development committee and a member of the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission. We actually don't have any more formal presentation. We have a whole lot of people here who would like to express their opinions. I see some of my commissioners in the audience, and they're probably going to want to come up and just say what they think about, about the park. I'm just going to point out a couple of things that I, I just want to make sure are very, very clear. If, if you look at, at the proposal that Mr. Ficker has, he's taking all of the grass area from the park. He's taken all the turf. All we're going to have left is the habitat area above. Now, we have been criticized, we, the city, and all of us have gotten phone calls and read letters in the Daily Pilot and what have you, about a couple of our recent parks, particularly the Back Bay View Park and Castaways, which are both in the coastal zone. And we were required by the Coastal Commission not to plant turf grass. We were not permitted to plant turf grass. We were not permitted to put watering systems in. We had to rely on purely natural environment, okay? And be that as may, this site is not in the coastal zone. It gives us an opportunity to show both our residents in the city, as well as the Coastal Commission perhaps, that this city knows how to put together a combination of beautiful native plants that could be a showplace, along with a turf park that will get enjoyed by people who want to see turf grass. I think it's really important. You can't put turf grass up at the northern part of the park. So if you put in Mr. Ficker's building, you've taken away all of the grass. You might as well not even have a park there, because nobody is going to go from City Hall walking around through a bunch of habitat area that is difficult to access. The other thing I'd like to point out, and I think, I think you've probably figured this out already, Hall &amp; Foreman have the plans all done. We're ready to go with this park. And we have gone, because of your direction, we have worked very hard to put this park together. And now to have someone come out of left field and say, I want to put City Hall on the park site, well, you, you know how I feel about that. The last thing I'd like to say is, we're talking about, I, I, I believe you mentioned it, Mr. Mayor, the possibility of putting turf on the, turf grass on the roof of the new City Hall building to mitigate the fact that, that, that we're taking away the turf grass. Now, come on.
It was, my, my concern was not necessarily to mitigate the taking away the turf grass, was to provide a public space that would provide a, provide a replacement for the review, the view that would be lost if we don't build a park there. And if you look at turf grass, and a wonderful example of that situation is you go down to Monarch Bay and the parking structure that the public uses, which is totally hidden from Coast Highway, is covered with grass.
Yes. No, no, I, I know. It can be done.
Yeah.
But my point is, we have a plan to put a grass park in there. And the grass park is going to be large enough for people to throw a frisbee, people to walk around, have lunch, brown bag from, from Fashion Island or, or Newport Center. And, and that's not the same thing as putting grass on the roof of City Hall. A couple of other things. I'll, I'll kind of do what Mr. Ficker did. I forgot a couple of things. Another thing you should notice is, Mr. Ficker said he, his, his plan was designed to make everything look very open. But if you look at the back of the site, come, come from Fair Lawn, across that way, and down to MacArthur where the site is, that's one huge retaining wall. Matter of fact, I think according to his numbers, the, the site varies from 170 to 192. And the library floor is 135. That's a, what, 40, 20, 40, 60-foot retaining wall? All the way across the back of the site? Because that's the only way you can sink that site down and make it flat and make it parallel to the floor of the library. It's at least 20, 30 feet.
I believe if you look at the, the section that was in our report, it says that there's a 10-foot
a 10-foot wall, and a lot of it is slope. It's probably a two-to-one slope.
If it's a 10-foot retaining wall, is it going to be a concrete wall that's sloped this way? I mean, it doesn't...
No, it starts off like that, and then up above it goes up to the top of the berm on MacArthur Boulevard.
Okay. Well, the top of the berm on MacArthur Boulevard...
Even that could be removed if the berm on MacArthur Boulevard were removed, but that's...
But the top of that berm, according to Mr. Ficker's presentation, is 192 elevation, and the library floor is 135. So somehow you've got to dig that site down 60 feet in order to make it flat and parallel to the library.
I think that if you look at Mr. Ficker's plan, this site here is the 190 feet.
Right.
The City Hall's elevation, as I interpret, the floor of City Hall would be 160. The library's at 134, and the parking structure would be several different levels, starting at the 160 and working its way down in three levels to get down here, if I interpreted the plan correctly.
So in other words, it's not going to be at the level of the library, it's going to be 30 feet higher, and you're going to access...
The City Hall would be, yes.
You're going to access the building from the parking structure. That was going to be my other point. Many of you may remember the problem we had with the lights at the library parking lot. You're putting a two-story parking structure, which by definition has to have lights, for safety and for no other reason, and it's going to be right at the view plane. The library parking structure, the library parking lot, where we had all the problem with the neighbors, including my neighborhood, and the lights, is 135 elevation. Now you're talking about going up to 160 elevation and putting in a two-story parking structure, so not only do people get a chance to look at the park, at the parked cars, but they get to look at the lights as well.
Okay, we could probably debate this, but if you look at the plan here, the parking lot elevation is at 160, not up two stories higher, so that any lights would end up still being suspended.
The lights would be at 160.
No, the floor of the parking structure's at 160.
So the lights would be higher than that?
Yes.
The lights at the library that caused all of the problem are 10 feet higher than 135. So we had the library light problem with lights at maybe 145 and 150, and now you're talking about lights that are 20 feet higher in the air. Just a few little details that I think are rather significant.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have until 6 o'clock. And I think that we'd like to hear public comments related to the two various different issues that we have discussed tonight, and I'd like to see if we can get a mixture, if... Let me get just a rough show of hands. How many people feel that there should be a park on the site north of the library? Okay, how many feel, would like to see more work done and consider a City Hall north of the library? Okay, I didn't count everybody exactly, but it looks like that we're about split equally. And so that...
Both sides dispute that.
I understand that, I could do that, but I'll bet that you might have 40%, 60%. I'll give you that edge, if you want.
But you won't give which side?
I'm not saying.
Talking like a true politician.
Okay, let's see if we can alternate up here to where we don't get bogged down with one side or the other, since we're here. And those of you that feel that you would like to make a presentation and you have new points or things that we haven't considered so far, or you would like to have us consider it, please bring it up. But if we repeat the same thing over and over again, we're going to run out of time before we get finished, so, welcome.
Do you want to limit to two minutes, like, in order to try and get the most people?
All right. Does the council feel that a two-minute limit on presentations would be appropriate for this? Anybody, do you object to a two-minute limit on this? Okay, everybody has two minutes.
Don't you want to give them a little longer unless there's that many people?
Okay, why don't we try for two minutes, and we'll try it out, and if we're not getting enough time, then we may extend it to three.
Don't touch me about repetition. We came down here, we made our case, the lights went on, we went home, we'll be back again. So I don't understand why this came up again, although I realize facts have changed. Now, the study group is surely going to look at the costs of these various alternatives. There is no appraised value on the park site because it was never contemplated to be used for a building. So I just kind of wonder, if it was unthinkable to put a commercial building on the park site, why is it thinkable to put a government building on one? That being so, in addition to the actual appraised costs, the study group and the council must consider the social costs. People living near that area, the ones whose hats went up to, in answer to your first question, will be severely impacted. You know that. Noise, traffic, the upheaval will be tremendous. They will see a high cost, and that should be considered by municipal organizations. But there'll be a broader cost borne by the entire city, the loss of a park in a magnificent location. It is a magnificent location. You come over that brow of MacArthur, you see this water green and the ocean beyond, it's priceless. Now, some people think a park is just a park. It's not. A fine city doesn't just put a park where it happens to have some space left over. It plans it, designs it, and builds around it. Mr. Ficker's right about one thing. If we were looking at a clean sheet Newport Beach, we probably wouldn't put the City Hall here. If we were looking at a clean sheet New York City, you know where we'd put the City Hall? Right where Central Park is, the best location for it, ideally located. Council members, when you have the facts before you, I hope to raise your eyes above the numbers and visualize this city in the future. I hope it will be a city that has the wisdom and the confidence to make a decision to preserve our charm, the city's charm, in spite of architectural temptations. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it'd be better for us to just figure on three minutes. I think two minutes is a little bit...
How long did he take?
Short. He took two minutes and 32 seconds.
I think I can get under that. My name's Dennis Baker, I live in Corona del Mar, and first off, I want to state that I'm opposed to the taking of park lands, and I choose those words very carefully. There's been some proposals here that indicate there might be some trading, there might be some things like that. I actually think, and it's been alluded to numerous times, I actually think there's a way of gaining park land. And, Mr. Mayor, you've mentioned it, I have in my hand right here a brochure from a company called Reyna Creek, one of many, but they're one of the most renowned, done work in UCLA, doing work in Los Angeles, so on. And I will, I don't have them with me, but I will provide each council member with this particular brochure from them for reference. And so the idea is that Reyna Creek has done many buildings that have, not, turf is not always the right term, basically landscaped roofs, so they can have habitat on, have grasses, have turf, so on and so forth. It's a whole field in architecture. And therefore, I think it is possible, remember, I'm still opposed to the taking of park land, but I think it is possible to look at this carefully and come up with a solution that may actually be able to provide a park on top of the building. I think that is doable now, the issue is cost. I think the whole, I think one of the biggest scams on Newport Beach was the word "free City Hall." I mean, I just cringe on that. There is no free City Hall, there's no free lunch. I think our police chief quoted recently, or somebody, police chief, "If it sounds too good to be true, it is too good to be true," you know, when you buy that car for half price. So I think we need to give some consideration to that. Examples were referenced, the Muth Interpretive Center, you can walk right out on the top of that, it's, look around, it's sand, it's sage, and you're on top of the building. So we have some examples of that. I will be getting this to each of the council members, and hopefully we'll have a chance to talk to each of you about that. Thank you very much.
Good, and that was under two minutes.
I'm Elizabeth Starr, and I've lived in Corona del Mar for 34 years. In 1989, my husband and I accepted the responsibility to raise the money to build the public library, the main library. If, after we had worked, and it was a five-year project to raise that money to build that library, if after we had worked that hard, we had no dinner, that we did not discuss the library for five years, if the city council had changed their mind and said, "Sorry, we're not going to build a library," it would have been bad news. Now, you have had a group of citizens who have gone out to raise money for this park. If you now tell them, "Sorry, it's not going to happen," you will never get another group of citizens to help the city of Newport Beach. The illustrations that were shown, both by Mr. Ficker and by the park group, show that little tiny stretch of San Miguel between MacArthur and Avocado. No time can you get through that light of that intersection. No time of any time of day do you go by that intersection, that the traffic is not blocked up on MacArthur trying to make that turn, people going into Fashion Island, people going into the medical buildings. If you compound that intersection by having people go to City Hall, it will absolutely be disaster for Newport Beach. Furthermore, be aware that anybody who now lives in Irvine Terrace must make that turn because the way the highway is designed down at the bottom, they cannot get over in the left-hand lane fast enough to go into Irvine Terrace. So that whole block of residents must make that turn from MacArthur onto San Miguel, down Avocado, in order to get home now. Once again, the water situation at the library, we do pump daily, and that is something that should be considered, and we must have more parking on that site for the library. When we were building the library, we were to have 250 spaces for the art museum and 250 for the library. The art museum did not happen, therefore, we have 250 spaces. We cannot really use a meeting room at the library because we do not have the parking adequate to handle to have a large group in that meeting room. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please work your way forward so that we don't have to wait between speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and concerned citizens, my name is George Jeffries. I'm a resident of Corona del Mar and a resident of Old Harborview Hills, directly adjacent to the proposed building site that we have discussed tonight. Prelimarily, before I present my, the finish of my presentation last week, or two weeks ago, I was on the library board at the time that the lighting problem occurred. It was handled pretty readily by changing in lighting design that eliminated the problem as far as our neighbors were concerned. The San Miguel problem, however, continues to be a substantial issue as far as traffic is concerned, and I do know that Mr. Ficker has kept this simple, and he has not made an effort to present it to you. However, the grades are such that there's only a 15-foot grade separation at Fairlan at Avocado and Fairlan, if you extended Fairlan up to MacArthur. That's a 3% grade separation, and it means in effect that you could readily, if you chose to and designed the intersection, have the freedom that Mrs. Starr is concerned about concerning traffic circulation that could come down through Fairlan to Avocado in order to solve that problem. Now, the basic purpose of my presentation tonight is a continuation of my concern for the safety of the people of the city of Newport Beach. As you know, you are primarily responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, and I want to tell you a fast story. In 1964, I was a young district attorney who had occasion to come to the City Hall on numerous occasions, and on one night, there was a report of a huge earthquake in Alaska that devastated Anchorage. And according to the information we were getting, the tidal wave was coming down the California coast and had devastated Eureka as well. And I was there when the city police chief turned to the then-city mayor and said, "Well, Mayor, shall we evacuate the peninsula?" Now, I don't want to lengthen this because I know there's too little time to talk about it at this time, but suffice it to say...
You have about 35 seconds.
At some point in time, one of you sitting as mayor may get to answer that same question. And if you happen to decide that you're going to evacuate the city's peninsula because of a prospective tidal wave or earthquake or other danger, the next thing that's going to happen is the police chief is going to say to you, "Mr. Mayor, you must leave now too, because the City Hall situated in this location is on the peninsula, and you must evacuate all of the city employees as well so that they can deal with the devastation that could possibly be caused to our city. For that reason, I encourage you strongly to consider a site, perhaps not the site that's proposed by Mr. Ficker, but a site that is not located at this area." Thank you.
Thank you. Applause doesn't do you any good, so it may delay the meeting, but, Mr. Allen?
My name's Barry Allen. I just want to talk about fairness. The city manager, Mr. Bloudow, sent out something in our water bills quite some time ago to tell us about what the city was doing with the general plan, and it says, "One of the things it's going to do is going to protect public views in open space and prohibit development on designated open space." Now, want to talk about fairness, we'll go to the recreation and open space element of the city of Newport Beach, June 1988, or 1998, excuse me. And it says that 60% of the people want walking paths in their parks. That's what this particular park has, both in the upper and lower level as designated. Corona del Mar only has only half of the parks that are needed. However, if you count the beaches, then we'd still be deficient by 9.1 acres, that's even with this park. The environmental resources in the, discussed in this, talk about how we're supposed to preserve environmental resources, but at the same time give parks. And this, again, indicates to the people of Newport Beach in 1989, or 1998, excuse me, that we're talking about this particular park, and what we're going to do in this park and other parks that are going to be built in the city. "The objective and policy is to operate and maintain and enhance existing public recreational facilities at current or increased levels of service, ensure adequate operational and maintenance provisions for two, I'm sorry, excuse me, for new recreational facilities in annexed areas." This is the objective and policy from 1998. Funding, they talk about identify potential financial mechanisms and explore potential financing means for timely and balanced development of the city's recreational facilities. Well, as we've already heard, I'm not going to detail it, we've already done this. The public did this, people in your park committee did this and went out and raised the money to build this particular park after it had been approved. This particular park isn't something that just came along yesterday. This park has been in the system ever since at least 1998, and it talks about it on page 4.6, where it discusses Newport Village Neighborhood Park, 12 acres, park site above the central library. It shows it on a map. Again, it's talked about as part of a CIOSA agreement, open space dedication. It sure isn't open space to build a City Hall there, folks, that's not open space anymore, and you got a CIOSA agreement. Wouldn't it be interesting? Because it's a CIOSA agreement, guess who has to approve changing that designation from a park to somewhere where you can build an office building? Gosh, who would that be? The Irvine Company, exactly the people who don't want to deal with you on the property on Civic Center where they say they won't ever sell property. And yet, we all know the Irvine Company's behind the plan to try and build a City Hall here, because they don't want you taking some other property from them. They want it in Newport Center, they've always wanted City Hall in Newport Center, and all of you know that. They've always wanted it there, and now they're going to get it, but they're going to get it on our park site, not on their own property, or we might be able to work out a deal with it. Again, it showed the facility just mentioned throughout here. I just think it's ultimate fairness to the citizens of the city of Newport Beach that it's just unfair, unfair to even think about taking this park site and building a City Hall there. And if you want to give me some time, I'll talk about water on the property. If you don't want to, I'll sit down.
I think that we know enough about water right now. Thank you. Please, the applause, just move forward, those that want to speak, so that we can shorten the distance between time.
I'm Nancy Gardner from Corona del Mar. A wonderful presentation by Mr. Ficker, you almost convinced me, with a lot of exciting things about it. My concern, though, is the precedent. We have open space, we dedicated it as open space, and as I said once before, it seems like it's always fair game. But even farther, I think, even if we mitigate, even if we suddenly make this into an urban park, which is, you know, one-for-one or something like that, with this park, you asked a group of people to go out and get some private funding. They did. Now we take that away. The next time we have a park and we want to get some private funding, who on earth would give the money? Because they would say, "Well, I have no guarantee with the city of Newport Beach that this will remain open space, which is what I'm giving my money for." So I think we have to be very careful about any precedents we set by reversing this stand from open space to a public building.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Ben Schmidt. I've lived on Balboa Island for 40 years, and I concur with Mr. Ficker that the City Hall would be in a very good position there by the library. Several questions came up from council members regarding the wall that would be required along MacArthur, and I've given you a couple of pictures at Sail House... along MacArthur, and I've given you a couple of pictures at Sail House Lane and Sea Lane, just across the street from this site, across MacArthur. There's a 20-foot-high wall there. It's been planted with ivy, and you can see it, it's been there about two years, and it really looks quite attractive. If you need a 20-foot wall, this way you handle it with the ivy, and you have very dense housing just beside it, but it, it belongs. And the other item has to do with, there seems to be a pressure to get the show on the road because of the cost of construction, and the cost of construction, according to the annual news record, has been dropping some this, six months of this year, and it probably will not continue to rise as, as the inflation, the funds you get from stores and restaurants and, and the improvement of, increase of property values. So I think you can stand back, take your time, look at this, have strong investigations made, and study it very well before you proceed and actually decide, I don't think I have to do it this week or within three months. I think you can stand, stand back and see if it's really the cut for you.
Thank you.[670.12][670.12](pause)
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Jan Van Der Soot from Newport Heights. I'm giving you a handout here. I won't be able to get through this in three minutes, but basically, it details a history of the site and the agreements that the city has made. The city has actually made two agreements on the site. The Library Exchange Agreement of 1991, when you remove the entitlement for the development above the library to Newport Center and declared this to be open space. So you have, you had the agreement in 1991 for this to be open space. And then in 1993, the CIOSA agreement called for the area to be dedicated to the city as open space, and the only use that's supposed to be used on that property is open space. And so you have two agreements, and I ask and I beg you to keep your agreements, keep your commitments, keep your faith with the people. What kind of example are we setting for the people of Newport Beach and our children when we change those kinds of agreements, when we already have two of them for open space? These are very valuable agreements to keep, and I, and I implore you to keep those agreements. I would like to make a mention of the, the views from the center of the southern part of the site where the city hall is going to be. Those views are the best views from the whole site. The views that are from the northern are basically truncated to be right above the library, so of course you can see the ocean, but you can only see the northern coastline, including the Newport Harbor and all the way to Huntington Beach and the Palos Verdes Peninsula from the turf grass area, which will be removed by the thicker city hall. That view opportunity will be lost completely unless you do as like you say to do and put turf grass on top of a building. You know, I mean, that, you know, that's something I would think about. The other thing is the environmental sensitivity is greater than what has been stated so far. That coastal sage scrub has nac catchers. There are vernal pools right in the area that Farallon would be cutting right through the park. And I would ask that whatever plan you do, you keep the coastal sage scrub, you don't do that plan that they just introduced last fall. I think that's, that's not a good idea, but you keep as much of the sensitivity as you can, and that you actually, if you do build a city hall, that you build it on the very, very southern end, and you keep everything, get rid of that parking lot, but that eighty space parking lot. And the last thing I want to do, the last page here shows a sensitive plant species called the woolly marbles. Look at the very last. These are only found in vernal pools, and those are found on the site that the consultant said was not environmentally sensitive. But in fact, you do have vernal pools up on that land that ought to be protected and will be a problem because the Army Corps of Engineers and Fish and Game will be on your back if you try to destroy those. So please keep your commitments. Thank you very much.
Now, Jan, Jan, are these the weeds that you were going to transplant to my front yard?[878.06][878.06](laughter)
I'm going to spread some of those woolly marbles on your front yard.[882.81][882.81](laughter)
Are these in the water space, or are they in the, down there by where the city hall was going to go, Jan?
No, he's talking about an area that would be right here, Dick. Isn't that correct? Okay. Let's, let's go. We've got to move forward.
Farallon, that's right.
Hi, my name is Ann Balderson. I live in Old Corona Del Mar, and I worked very hard on saving this open space in the first place, and it is an incredibly beautiful sight, and I would like to just say something about the beauty of this place and what a gem it truly is. And, and I feel that it's a gem for the people that live here and for the people that come to visit our area, and that, that not everyone has a, has a beautiful view from their living room. And to be up on that site is so special, and I'd like to just invite anyone that hasn't been up there for a while to come up. And of course, right now it's summertime, a lot of the native plants and native species are, have died back, so it looks a little crunchy up there, but it's, it's incredible that the, the air blows around, the breeze, the, the views of the ocean, and I just feel that that belongs to our people. You know, it belongs to the people that live here, so that they can go up and take their kids and fly kites, throw frisbees, and learn about nature, and learn about endangered species. And I, I think that the, the amphitheater on the park site is, would be great for teachers to bring their classrooms and teach them about nature and why it's so important to protect it. And I'd just like to invite you all to go up there. Thank you.
I've been there several times.
I figured you would, you would have been.
Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just want to thank Bill Ficker publicly.
Dick, can you give us your name, please?
James Turner, Newport Beach. I just want to thank Bill Ficker publicly for all the time and work he's put into this project, and I support it fully. We have seven or eight miles of beautiful beaches here, and I don't think many of us moved here for the park space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Lucille Keown. I wanted to put some historical and maybe a little bit of political perspective into some of the discussion. I built my home in Irvine Terrace in 1957, 58, when cattle grazed in Newport Center. I didn't object when Newport Center was being built. I thought, gee, this is a great convenience. When, in 1974, I decided to run for city council, one of the major planks in my platform was building adequate library facilities, and this was long before 1989, when money was being raised for. There was a great need at that time, and the time existed until we were able to fund it, until we had a city council that, that supported it. I'd like to ask a question. How many of you have been to the Roger Sites View Park in Newport Center? Would you raise your hands? The Roger Sites View Park in Newport Center? Very, very few. It's a beautiful little site. It's precious, it has a-
That's right by the escalators.
Yes, it's below rocks.
Yes, I've been there.
Yes. I helped to dedicate that, I helped to dedicate that park, and it was in the memory of a very great man and a very great planner who worked for the Irvine Company. The Irvine Company has put a lot of thought into the planning of the city. I, I'm sorry that they're reticent in helping us to develop another site. When Bill Ficker made his presentation, I came off my E-Day fix because I too supported this wonderful park plan. I walked that site. There's a picture of me and the Daily Pilot on the front page looking down saying, "Isn't this a glorious site?" Well, when you get new information, if you're a thinking person, if you're a person of some wisdom, you sometimes change your ideas in order to accommodate to the needs of the people. One of the problems with our city is that we have, we identify as individual districts, and we don't identify with the city as a whole. When I ran for city council, I brought this problem to the floor and tried to help solve it. I have not solved it because we still are seven districts without a center, without, without something to identify as a city center and where our hearts and our souls. I'd like to ask the Allens, how far do you live from the site?
Well, let's, let's keep it, let's not get into discussions because it'll last forever.
All right, I can go on. I, I know you, you know I can.[1242.12][1242.12](laughing)
Well, actually, your time just ran out. Can you please summarize?
Okay.
I interrupted you.
Well, I would say that one of the best things that Bill Ficker has done is to open our eyes to the possibility of something other than the site of the city hall as where we stand at this moment and sit, that there are other possibilities. And I'd like to expand our minds and think of all the possibilities and what is the greatest good for the greatest number of the people in Newport Beach.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Bernie's Falstad Council. I was the chairperson at a 20-person committee that raised a million and two originally for this park. It's down to 600,000. Basically, I don't want to be redundant, I'll just mention a couple of points. If you put a city hall here as Mr. Ficker has designed, it would appear to me we'll have scrub at the top that looks like Jamboree and Pacific Coast Highway, then we'll have a rooftop of city hall. This, like they mentioned, is probably the most beautiful view anywhere in city for a park up on the top portion that would be turf. So it's a beautiful area. I suggest that you have the clout and the capability, if you don't, I'd be questioned why, that the best spot is Corporate Plaza. They have a building, I think, that's vacant. If they won't lease, they got to lease it to somebody. You get a 99-year lease, option to buy, that's the best site in the city, and I don't know why we don't have enough pressure, we don't have enough clout to negotiate a deal with city hall there. Thank you.
Thank you.[1347.23][1347.23](applause) We have time for two more people.[1351.12][1351.12](pause) Uh-oh, gosh.[1354.12][1354.12](laughter) All right. Well, if, if we can get you to, to talk fast, then we'll see. We've got three people then.
Garrett, Garrett Smith, architect. I completely concur with Bill Ficker's plan. I'd like to point out a couple of things that I don't believe have been mentioned specifically. They've talked about traffic problems around the Fickers' plan. This is a wonderful opportunity to, a traffic engineer, to take care of the problems on San Miguel and the, and the city library and the shopping center there. So that's another good point about the library or the city hall being there. One of the things I'm concerned about city hall being here is sand liquefaction. I did building over here about 200 yards away in 1958, I believe it was, Baylito Office Building. We had to put concrete pilings down 35 feet to support the building and to concern for liquefaction of the site. You have that same problem right here. You can't just put building on, on the ground here, or we'll all be sued. The other thing is the mention of the flood. This is too close to sea level and be wiped out here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, we had two more people that, Ron and the gentleman sitting over in the corner.
Good evening, council members. I'm Ron Hendricks in Newport Beach. I just want to comment, I know it's very frustrating for all these folks that have put hours and hours and hours into this park site, and, but I think we have to look for the, the total betterment of the community when we're really down to the last time that we're analyzing where we're going to put the city hall. I think Bill has pointed out some, some very concerning problems of having it in the location on this existing site. I think we need, need not forget that if it were located on the MacArthur-Avocado site, there's still this ample park site up there, and the park promoters in this town, and more recently, have really wanted this natural type park, so what would remain up there is a natural type park, and I, I think many of you, I know, have been up on the site. The one thing that cancels out the goodness of the site up there is the noise from MacArthur. I think they have a turf area up there, or even amphitheater, is all going to be compromised by the noise from MacArthur. One question that, well, I just want to conclude, I think, the council hopefully will give real serious consideration to this site. I think a lot of information has come out here on both sides, and unfortunately, we didn't have these kind of discussions in the past. I think that this site was, was pretty much a given thing before it ever got opened up to the public. Last thing is I wonder why Laguna was able to build the Montage Park right on the bluff and put in a fantastically beautiful park with all kinds of landscaping, flowering plants, and we're not able to do that in Newport. Somehow, they must have a real connection with the Coastal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. This gentleman over here.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Barton Beek. I'm here with my wife, Linda. We live in Corona Del Mar. I want to say that I've heard this drumbeat that says we can't use parkland for a city hall. What I hear this proposal to be is a proposal to place a city hall on that parkland and free this site that we're standing on to be a parkland in the heart of the traditional city. I think that's a very good trade. I live in Corona Del Mar. I go by this park site every day, two or three times a day. I don't think it's a very good park site. I don't see the residential base that will send little kids to play in that park. They aren't there. They're not going to be able to get there unless they pack into their SUVs and drive there. So I don't see that park functionally as very desirable. This park much more desirable, and of course, the traffic problem. Wherever you put the city hall, there's going to be a traffic problem, but the one worst place, right here, as we all know. Oh, and one more thing. The Environmental Protection Agency tells us that within 50 years, the level of the sea will likely have risen a foot and a half. Now, that won't quite flood this building, but it'll make this building uninhabitable.
Excuse me, can you get your little brother behind you to agree with us more often, please?
I don't know. I don't have any influence over him.[1659.12][1659.12](laughter)
I agree with what he said.[1664.12][1664.12](laughter)
All right.[1666.12][1666.12](laughter) Oh, my. Okay. What I'd like to do is, we're running short, we have to close at 6:00. I personally would like to ask the staff to come, and I want to throw this out to the council, and the council can either hit me over the head and say, "Go away," or say it's a good idea, let's propose it. I'd like to see if the staff can come back to us with a proposal that would tell us how we might be able to do an advisory vote on this site, and one that, if we do do an advisory vote, that would say the park site would, would be exchanged for the city hall site here if that, if we were to put the city hall over in the other, other area, realizing that we have not done environmental documentation to fully justify putting a city hall anyplace else other than here, and that environmental documentation would actually have to be done prior to, before it could be built over at the other side. But if we could work out some sort of proposal or wording, or you could give us guidance on what would be needed if we were to put together an advisory vote. I guess that, that I really, up until six months ago, felt that, that we were going in a direction, the park was already determined, it was out there. Since this discussion has come up, I have, I've really gotten mixed reactions from a broad section of the community. I have felt that, that the input that I have received has been from both sides, and that I, I think that because it's so equal out there, that, that I think that we need to, this is a situation where we can go to the public and say, "All right, you have an opportunity to tell us, should it be over there or should it be here?" And if, if we do come up with some sort of, of proposal like that, I think that we need to see what- some sort of proposal like that, I think that we need to see what kind of wording changes, if necessary, we might need to make in the new general plan that we're, that we're proposing to accommodate that. So I'm tossing that out. What does the rest of the council think about a proposal similar to that? I got him speechless. This is really unusual.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't think that in the time that it would take to put something together for the ballot, that we can define these sites in a way that sort of solves all the open issues. I mean, Mr. Ficker did a very good job today of conceptualizing his plan, but we don't know what the floor plan will look like, how many stories, what it will really do to the view, whether or not it deals properly with the water plane there. You know, we have green light issues potentially by changing the designation. And frankly, I think this is, this is a hard decision. I agree with you because I've, I've, will be talking to somebody and another person will walk up and have a diametrically different view about this. But this is the kind of decision that I think the people expect us to look at the data, to weigh it. And I'm glad that we have this hearing today. As I said before, I was skeptical of this plan, but I think it put a lot of good information on the table, to get all the information out, but then to make a decision, to make it in a transparent way, and to put forth the reasons for why we make it.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I agree with Councilman Curry when he said that I think that we're here to, to make the decisions on things like this. That's what representative government is, is all about. And I think we, you know, we do need some additional information. I, I think that there's one site in Newport Center that we really haven't evaluated. It was actually the third site on the, on the site committee's list, and that's the existing police and fire facility on Santa Barbara. And there might be a way for us to build a facility there. It would be a more of a multi-story facility like we have in other buildings in Newport Center that would give us the central location without taking away the park. And that fell short on the committee's list because the council had put constrictions, or constraints, I should say, on what the site committee was looking at in, in terms of, of the timeframe. And the site committee felt that the site was complicated enough that it could not be done in the timeframe that the council was asking for. But in light of the discussion that's come up over the central location in Newport Center, there's a site that we already own, and that if we did go to multi-story buildings on there, it's probably feasible to put in the type of square footage we're looking at and still not take away the park. So I think, I think there's maybe a little bit more work we need to do before we consider going to a ballot issue on it.
Councilmember Daigle, do you and Mr. Nichols have anything to say?
Yes, it's nice to see all of you today. And certainly both Lucille and Elizabeth have, have made very valuable contributions to our libraries and certainly part of the fabric, fabric of our community. I know that many of you have made very valuable contributions to our community. I think we can all agree that Mr. Ficker has opened the door to creativity, and I applaud him for his courage and, and trying to move his ideas forward. I happened to speak to another renowned architect today, and he expressed to me some interest in a, a plan at Civic Center. Now, I don't know if he'll come forward or, or send us surrogate. I'm not quite sure. But I do agree with Mr. Selich's idea, though, that, that maybe looking at that site also might be appropriate. It, it does seem that the community does have a desire for a central location, and I, I think we need to maybe look more closely at that as well.
Yeah, my comment on this is that when we had an art museum on this particular site, taking the same place as the city hall, that was all acceptable. And everybody, you know, was in line. They had bought into it. It wasn't so good when it was an interchange for a freeway. That wasn't the best site. So I, basically, people fought the interchange. When it was elderly housing, well, that wasn't really pushed real fast either direction. But it, but this has had multiple sightings on it. It's had multiple zonings for these things. The art museum just couldn't get the funding all together, I guess. And that's really why it disappeared, not because it wasn't acceptable to the population. If you come down MacArthur now, the berm that's there that restricts your ability to see the ocean is going to stay. And that's staying so that it acts as a sight impediment. So the houses across the street can't see the city hall. So they'll look above that sight plane and will, will not see anything there to the large extent. And depending on what level they are, they may see a little bit. Now, the top of the library building has never been an impediment to view that I've seen. I mean, I, going up there, that is not considered a view impediment. So I'm not sure that, that the present library has provided a view impediment at the roof of it. And it's pretty darn high. So I'm, I'm not convinced that, that we shouldn't look at this some more. I think that this, my feeling was, that this should be a baseline. We look right now at the fact that we're talking about excavating one half of what we were going to do for the city hall, parking, which would have given us something like two and a half times the amount of parking. So it would really allow the site to be properly parked. But we're doing this excavation anyway as part of the park. We're not bothering anybody. We're, we're putting in the green, and that's not bothering any of the flora or fauna that's supposedly so, so valuable and has to be protected. So I don't see the protection issue as one or the other. It seems to me that we can improve traffic significantly if we looked at maybe extending ferrelan. And that would be, that has some merit there and will ultimately probably be looked at. So I, I, I don't, I, I think that we're on the right track, and I think we need to do this. And I believe, now, we've seen a-
Dick?
-density here in our population that's been skewed. So as the meetings progress, I think you will not see that.
Mr. Nichols, we need to kind of shorten it up a little bit. What is your thought relative to an advisory vote?
I think we need to, to get more information. And as we do, I think the advisory vote will, will possibly become mute. I don't, I don't think we'll need that. I do think that the population should weigh in. It's obviously necessary. Thank you.
Mr. Rosanki, I haven't heard anything from you today. Not unless you want to.
Well, I mean, it's clear, or maybe not clear, I guess. It seems like even our council members are on one end to the other. You know, I'm, I guess, a little befuddled as to what to do now. I've always said that, you know, we should have city hall here. I've always said that that property should be a park. But now we're, you know, we, we just can't seem to, to settle on anything, unfortunately. Ed's talking now about another site, which may be a good site as well. I mean, I, I don't know. And so I, I guess, my feeling is, is that, you know, if we, if we, as a council, can't agree at least more than just the majority, more than just four members here, as to what the direction should be, because it is an important decision. I mean, we're talking about parks, we're talking about people's lives, we're talking about a, a building that's going to house our city government for the next fifty to seventy-five years, that maybe it does need more study. And I, I was against setting up the committee six months ago when we looked at alternative sites. You know, we've spent years now. I've, I've been on the city council three years, and, you know, we've been working on this ever since then, and they were working on it before I got here. So, you know, I, and, and we did do a show of hands here today, and half are in favor and half are against. And it, it seems kind of a divisive thing. I, I guess a few observations or, or my feelings on it. In the event that it did go that way, let's say that there was talk of putting city hall on this site, I, I would support the mayor in an advisory vote. And I'm not one that supports throwing things out there to electorate to vote. I agree with Councilman Curry that we're elected representatives, and we should make decisions. But I do carve out a couple of exceptions, and I did carve out one for Marina Park when we, when we had the advisory vote there. Because it was a site that was designated for a park, the city had plans to lease it to a developer to turn it into a hotel, which I thought was a, a desirable use for the property because it fulfilled other needs in the community, other than park needs, a fulfilled need to revitalize the peninsula. But it was city-owned land, and it was designated to be a park for years, years ago, even longer than this property's been designated to be a park. And so I felt it was important to get the, the pulse of the, of the community. And so if it does, at some point, look like we may consider city hall for this site, I would want to put it to an advisory vote. I think that the site needs a lot more study. Mr. Ficker's presented some interesting ideas, but I think he's only scratched the surface. I mean, we, we, when we had our site review committee, we looked at a lot of different sites, and we eliminated them for different reasons. And some of those reasons do exist here. I mean, we do have traffic issues on San Miguel that would have to be addressed. You can't just plump city hall down here and not figure that out. So, yeah, it may require putting a road from ferrelan onto MacArthur. Obviously, that's not going to be a popular thing. It may require putting lights in a parking lot. Obviously, that's not going to be a popular thing. And so all these things need to be studied. The impacts would need to be assessed before we can make an intelligent decision, or certainly before I'm willing to vote on it. I saw actually things about the park today that I didn't like. I didn't really like the fact that the parking lot's going to be where it's going to be. And quite honestly, if we do move forward with the park, you know, I'm going to insist that it be brought back and that we do examine other alternatives for parking there, you know, off of ferrelan, where people can actually drive in and walk on a level ground or semi-level ground to enter the park. So I don't think the park idea is, is quite finished either, at least in my book. So, you know, I, I guess, you know, in my mind, I don't, I'm not going to make a decision today. I'm, I'm, I think I want to noodle it a little bit more and take back some of the information that was gathered here today and, and think about it a little bit more.
This is scheduled for the evening meeting, our next meeting, to make a determination of which direction we're going to go. And so that my thought was, in having the staff put together what it might take if we were to go that direction, that way we aren't saying that this is the way, what we're going to do, but at least we would have the information available in case that was one of the directions we tended to go.
Well, certainly, I wouldn't object to hearing more information. And I do want to add one other thing to my comments. If, in fact, this property did ever become a, a city hall site, or a portion of it did, I would insist in my mind, anyway, that this prop, that we're not going to have a net loss of park site in town, that somehow the park would have to be replaced. I like the mayor's idea of, you know, greening the top of a building. I mean, I certainly, in, in that case, it might even create more opportunities for people, not only a park site here, but, you know, a broader, you know, expanse of green, even on the city hall site. So that would be my opinion as well.
I think that my, my proposal meant that, I mean, included something similar to what Mr. Ficker had predicted for this projected, for this site to be an open space site. Okay, let's, we have a closed session that we're supposed to adjourn to. So I think your direction, public comments on items that we haven't discussed.
Discussed, right. I want to just say a couple of things. My name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. It was a year ago in March and a year ago in April that we sat here on Saturdays to discuss this issue, okay? Over a year ago. And people wanted an advisory vote then. People wanted to vote then. And we wasted a year and a half on thinking that this was the only location, when you were told weekend after weekend by so many people in the city that this wasn't the right site. I want to applaud you tonight, this afternoon, okay, for the fact that you're actually choosing maybe to leave this site and to go somewhere else. And I think that the plan that Mr. Selich has to go over to the fire and police station, since we're going to redo the police station anyway, and if we redo the police station, we're going to redo the fire station. So it will be a work in progress. In the museum site, if you run out of space, the museum site near there could be a parking structure in case you run out of sight. So I want to applaud you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to have a public comment? Okay, thank you. We're adjourned to closed session. We will re-adjourn for regular meeting at seven.